Regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order? Could we have a roll call, please, Desiree?
Sure. Mayor Sigada?
Ready.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Present.
Commissioner Schuster?
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo? And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Y'all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out this evening. One announcement. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, October 28th, 6:00 p.m., here in the chambers. This time we'll take any items from citizens present, however, if it is an item regarding the -- on the agenda, please wait until that item comes up. But right now, we will take any comments. If any none, we'll move on. Item 6A, deliberate enact on approval of the September 23rd, 2025 regular meeting minutes. All should have had a chance to go over them. If there are no corrections or additions, the meetings will stand approved as presented. Minutes? Oh, I'm sorry. The minutes will stand approved as presented. Any corrections? The minutes will stand approved. Thank you. Item B, report. The J-JAC program coordinator Danielle Vanderpool. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this agenda item involves a report presented by J-JAC program coordinator Danielle Archuleta, providing updates to the Juvenile Justice Advisory Committee activities, youth intervention efforts, and outcomes of programming designed to reduce juvenile delinquency. While no action is required, this report supports transparency and performance assessment alignment with the state juvenile justice guidelines. And I do not see Ms. Archuleta in the crowd, but she did submit in your -- a written report. I can read that report, or -- sure, why don't you folks out there? Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. On behalf of our entire team, I want to begin by expressing our deepest gratitude for your contribute partnership and belief in the prevention of youth develop -- in prevention and youth development programming within our community. Since 2008, these prevention programs have remained strong, consistent, and committed to creating meaningful opportunities for our youth and families across Colfax and Union Counties. Over the years, we have seen lives changed through early intervention, education, and restorative practices that build resilience and promote healthy choices. Today in 2020 -- today in 2025, our programs are thriving. We are proud to share that restorative programming in the Girls Circle and Boys Council continue to grow, provide safe empowering spaces for young people to learn accountability, develop leadership skills, and strengthen their sense of belonging. This year also marks the exciting expansion of our Learning Lab, a vital resource for online students who are struggling to stay engaged or need additional academic support. The Learning Lab has quickly become a brigade -- a bridge for youth who might want to otherwise fall through cracks, helping them gain confidence and stay connected to their education. Danielle, did you want to finish your report, or do you want -- or I can finish reading it?
Thank you for everything. Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, sure, so we have a slideshow tonight. Thank you for doing that. Uh, City Manager Rick, really appreciate it. So the City of Raton Continuum presentation, um, we have a lot of great information in this slide. So, an introduction of our programs is the Boys Council, and we've been going strong in the Boys Council since 2012. And Girls Circle, the Girls Circle does aim -- it doesn't aim to provide any kind of advice, but to give support and to do fun activities that are theme-based. And then we also have a program called Mother Daughter Group, and it's an eight-week program. And then our Girls Circle group, it's important to give the girls a safe place, to give them voice to feelings. And when girls voice their ideas and opinions in a safe environment, it helps them to be able to move forward. The Boys Council also promotes natural strengths and to increase their options. The Mother Daughter Group is a group to bring them closer together. And then we have restorative programs. We emphasize think before you speak, T, is it true, H, is it helpful, I, is it inspiring, N, is it necessary? Anytime that you're in a circle, if it's not those things, not to share, but to be honest. And, um, restorative has really evolved a lot. We have restorative rooms called the Zen Den at Raton High School, and this is Andy Ortega pictured in here. She's been a facilitator since we have evolved into the Zen Den. And then we have our board member testimonies with Michael Ann Antonucci. Um, she has been on the board since 2009 and serves as the Core Cab Fiscal Agent. We're very grateful for all the work that she does. Erica Meadows, um, she's our Chief Justice Probation Officer and does a great job. And Judge Amy Ronich also supports everything and is our Chair of our Board. Very appreciative of all of them. And then this has been our subcontractor now since FY 2024 of New Hope Family Counseling for Restorative Services and also the Learning Lab. And New Hope Family Counseling has done a lot of great things in in-kind and in supporting our community this year. This is their back-to-school presentation for the Zen Den, and it talks all about the staff, their education, their favorites. And then the five Rs of restorative really is about relationships, respect, responsibility, repair, and reintegration. These are two new facilitators this year, Ms. Audrey Mendon and Rhiannon Varela. They serve as restorative circle facilitators and Learning Lab staff. And this is New Hope Family Counseling Learning Lab. Um, this is a great place where they can enjoy their lunch, and then they also have two different learning areas with computers and lots of great support. They have eight chairs and lots of fun things. And this was everybody having fun at the homecoming parade. And then YUs restorative practice. We want to strengthen relationships, promote empathy and understanding, reduce suspensions and conflict, empower students to become problem solvers. And these were fun restorative practices in class at Raton Intermediate School. And then we also have youth heartline programs in Girls Circle Boys Council. This is the Director Felice Medina. And these are the Girls Circle facilitators, Gaila Martinez, Victoria Garcia, and Jo Salazar. And our Boys Council facilitators are Robert Treehill, Brandon Robertson, Kevin Stratton, and we also have Nathaniel Hebrin, and Jada Caderro, pictured with him, is on our City of Raton Continuum Youth Board and our President for the State Board as well. And this is Girls Circle Curriculum Activities, some fun things that they do based on their curriculum to help promote self-affixy. And our Raton Youth Board. And this one. Are we able to play this, Michael Ann? This is a short video by Jada Caderro, and she does a great job on this.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jada Caderro. I am 22 years old, and I'm currently on the Raton Youth Board as well as the J-JAC State Board. So the first question is, what do I enjoy doing in my community? And a lot of what I do in my professional life is building connections with those in my community on an agency and per --
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jada Caderro. I'm 22 years old, and I'm currently on the Raton Youth Board as well as the J-JAC State Board. So the first question is, what do I enjoy doing in my community? And a lot of what I do in my professional life is building connections with those in my community on an agency and personal level. It is something that I enjoy doing because making connections is a stepping stone to understanding others. And our town is surprisingly diverse in backgrounds and ideologies for its size, so meeting others is always really interesting. So the second question is, why am I on the Youth Board? And the simple answer is because I wanted to, but the longer, more eloquent answer is that we are seeing a lot of the younger generation feeling comfortable enough to share their voices and advocate on divisive issues. However, we are also seeing a culture in which people who are in powerful positions will just disregard their voices as naivety or misguided outright, instead of working to understand the issues from their point of view. And that's really why I'm on the Youth Board, to add credibility to those voices and to participate in a culture that tells youth that it's okay to advocate for what they believe in and that their time and effort will not be in vain. And the last question is, what does community mean to me? And there's a lot of different ways to answer this because community can be the area that you live in, or the people you're around, or even the groups that you identify with. However, community, to me at least, is all about connection, right? You can feel connected to the communities that your family grew up in, or that you grew up in, or that share your values, or communities that you feel like you can grow in. Community to me means more than just location. You have to be connected to something for it to be your community. Thank you for your time.
And I really liked the way Jada did this video because that's the core of our programs is to make connections, build relationships, and to provide the support to the youth that's necessary. Um, this is jumpstart with Gaila Martinez at the Zen Den and some of the activities done by Girls Circle. And then for recovery and remembrance, we have our City Manager pictured up there along with the ceremony and everybody at the entrance. It was a great in-kind event. For everything that we built in this program, we are to give 40% back in in-kind. We've never fallen short. We've gone over by 85% and more, and we are very grateful for all of our volunteers and all of our community efforts and partnerships. And then this is me, and I've been the Continuum Coordinator now since 2012. I'm also the Town and House Coordinator. I really enjoy working with the State J-JAC Unit, and they've been wonderful in supporting our community and really supporting us in a lot of different areas. Thank you, Michael Ann. And we're just truly grateful to the City of Raton. This year has been a really nice stepping stone because we have not only exceeded everything in our strategic plan, but we are above and beyond expectations by the state and also for programming. And we're just so grateful that this support service is in line with the schools. It is, um, a strong program, and we have strong collaborative partnerships. Our referrals come from all of the school principals and also the social workers, and it's to support the schools, the students, the families, and our community. So again, without you all supporting these programs, it would be really difficult to do what we do. And we're just so grateful for the City of Raton. We're also so grateful for all the participants, the subcontractors, the facilitators. And this year it's been exciting because the facilitators have all been in position for over a year and a half now, and, um, one came back on Jo Salazar. That was a facilitator in 2016 under HRDA, so she has experience and understands what the programs are about. And it's so amazing when you have experienced individuals that know what their work entails to see how effective it flows and to see the production come out that comes out from the work. So we're just so grateful for all the expertise. Everybody has received over 20 hours in trauma training this year, and they are officially certified in their programs. So, um, again, this is a team effort. Couldn't do it without all of you, without our Core Cab, our Board, Michael Ann. She's amazing at everything she does, especially with expenditures and high invoices. We really appreciate all your work, Michael Ann, and then all of the staff at the city. Desiree is always a great help to me when I come in and make copies to flyers and let me know what I need for our in-kind. And we also have Taryn Jacomo, who is so amazing at reviewing the invoicing. Um, so again, thank you all to your team, along with all the subcontractors.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great program. It's come a long way.
Yes.
A long way. Any questions, comments?
No. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Danielle.
You're welcome. I appreciate you.
All right, item C, public hearing, deliberate enact on application seeking dispenser liquor license for CF Altitude LLC DBA Alta, number 6337, located at 1221 South Second Street. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this public hearing is to consider the application for dispenser liquor license by CF Altitude Little Bit -- Limited Liability Corporation, doing business as Alta, number 6337. The proposed location is at 1221 South Second Street and has been reviewed for compliance with zoning regulations and the requirements under the New Mexico Liquor Act 2024, New Mexico statutes, and Administrative Code, Chapter 60, Article 6B, Section 60-6B-4, issuance or transfer of license, approval of appropriate governing body. Public input will be considered prior to vote, and, uh, these folks have, um, looks like over 100 licenses in six states. The city recommends voting in the affirmative on this action.
And this is open to public comment? Does anyone wish to address this? Commissioner, any questions, comments? Everything seems to be in order. Like I said, they've throughout the six states and all that, so I want to entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the, um, application seeking dispenser liquor license for CF Altitude LLC DBA Alta, number 637, located at 1221 South Second Street.
I'll second.
Have motion and a second? Any further discussion?
I just have one question on this.
Sure.
So I just want to make sure that we've done the notice twice during the 30 days prior to the hearing, according to --
Yes.
I have published it. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I think everything else looks to be in order, so that was just my question.
Any other questions?
Am I missing somewhere? And this will be their first New Mexico license?
No, I believe there's a --
I don't see.
I think there's a representative on the --
There's.
There's Lisa on the phone.
There was a pretty comprehensive list there, yeah.
Yeah.
Lisa, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, is this the first New Mexico license?
No, this is not the first New Mexico license. The license is currently leased to the, um, proposed li -- the proposed location. It is a change of ownership application.
Any other questions? All righty, all in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, introduction of ordinance, permitting the Raton Code of Ordinances, Section 70.01, General Traffic and Parking Regulations. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this item introduces a proposed amendment to Section 70.1 of the Raton Code of Ordinances to update provisions related to general traffic and parking regulations. The amendment aims to improve traffic flow, safety, and compliance with the 2025 New Mexico Uniform Traffic Ordinance, New Mexico statutes, and Administrative Code, Section 3-17-6. A public hearing and final action will be scheduled at a future meeting.
Lisa, hand her --
Hand left.
Yeah, this is the introduction of an ordinance. So, public hearing is required. This is an ordinance for the general traffic and parking regulations and update. Is there any questions, comments?
So what does this change?
Um, I think what this changes is it brings into compliance, uh, the new 2025, uh, changes, and, um, I believe our city attorney is writing this so that as the changes happen, we don't have to keep updating the ordinances.
That's okay. I just thought maybe I might be able to answer some questions just because I'm the one that gets the emails for all these wonderful changes. So if you notice in our ordinances, we've always adopted the 2010 Uniform Traffic Compilation. Well, even in 2019, when things changed, they still kept that title, 2010 Compilation. 2025 is not the same. It's actually called a New Mexico 2025 Compilation, and it's going to be a lot different than the other ones, and I think it's going to be kind of interesting for our law enforcement to get used to it. But it is in statute that, um, or in, uh, our ordinances, that if it changes, we must adopt it since we go by the UTO.
And the changes are --
It changed the numbers. Um, I can always make you -- you guys a copy of it if you want. It's about 50 pages. A lot of the, instead of just like, for example, 10-6-4 for registration, now there's 10-6-4.3, not having it on correctly, and, um, 6-7, 6-7.1, they're a lot different. They, they put everything down instead of just having it under one thing. Um, I did have some questions for the city attorney regarding this. For example, how does the, um, because not everyone in the state uses the UTO. So my question was, how does the MVD know how many points to take off of a license if not everybody does it? And so, um, Mr. Flusham is working on that, and he's working on just the rewording so that anytime that date changes, we don't have to come in front of the commission. It could just be all-inclusive from the municipal UTO, is basically.
Generally, it sounds like a formatting change and --
It's going to be lots of fun for the clerk and for the police. But as far as any kind of changes to our, our street laws, it doesn't change anything. It just changes how we put it in the computer and how it gets reported to the MVD and then to, of course, people's licenses when they get cited.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Flusham and I kind of talked about it, and we just thought it might be easier to just change the wording so that in 2026, if something changes in, in the end of June, when it goes into effect on July 1st, we don't have to come back every time. So if there was just a way to make it so that we can do it all-inclusive, the municipal uniform traffic ordinances all adopted.
Any other questions?
Good clarification, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, this, this is just an introduction.
Yeah, and anytime you guys have any questions, just let me know. I'm always on the office, so. I just wasn't sure if, how much was known about what the UTO actually is because usually it's just the court and the law enforcement that even deal with it. So, um, if you guys have any questions, I'm always there.
Thank you.
I'm looking to introduce the ordinance, permitting the Raton Code of Ordinances, Section 70.01, General Traffic and Parking Regulations.
One second.
Motion a second to introduce the ordinance. Is there any further discussion?
The only thing I want to make sure is clarified, just since I know we're being recorded so that the public also knows this, is these do not take effect until it is passed by the commission. Therefore, we are still going by the 2019 version, which is the 2010. But I just want everybody out there to know that nothing is changing at this time. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. Desiree, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sigada?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
So introduce. Item E, deliberate enact on correction of ordinance number 1032 to number 1033 relating to the sale of public property within the City of Raton to BTU Block and Concrete. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this action corrects a clerical error in the numbering of the ordinance that approved the sale of the public property to BTU Block and Concrete. Ordinance 1032 should have been numbered Ordinance 1033. In accordance with the sequential municipal codification practices, this correction ensures proper legal documentation under 2024 New Mexico statutes, Chapter 3, Article 54, Section 3-54-1. The city recommends voting in the affirmative on this action.
Any questions, comments? Just clerical fix?
Yep, I will move to adopt ordinance, start to adopt the correction of ordinance 1032 to 10 -- to number 1033 relating to the sale of public property within the City of Raton to BTU Block and Concrete.
One second.
Motion a second to approve. Any further discussion? Do we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sigada?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Pass this, thank you. Item F, deliberate enact on proposed development for El Portel site. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this action concerns a proposed development project at the El Portel site, which aims to repurpose the property for quality of life and community use. The proposed development aligns with the city's comprehensive plan and meets zoning and land use regulations as outlined in the Raton Code of Ordinances. The results of a city survey showed Option 1 gathered 116 votes, Option 2 gathered 229 votes, Option 3 gathered 53 votes. The working group also selected Option 2 as the recommended path. It should be noted there are need -- there needs to be some modifications to Option 2 as the pump track that was included has already been slated for Romero Park under a separate grant. Um, there are a few people here tonight that want to speak about this, and, uh, we recommend city selection so the city can move forward.
All righty. This time we will take any comment from anyone wishing to address the commission. Please state your name.
My name is John Byrus. Thank you. I passed out something for your consideration tonight for the proposed Old El Portel site. The City of Raton has quite a few parks. Matter of fact, they think we have enough parks. That's my opinion. City of Raton should not delete properties from the tax rolls. I believe we need to augment our income stream. City of Raton should not concentrate, should concentrate on increasing tax base by creating taxable properties. And last but not least, I believe that the property would best be served if it was considered for a mixed-use development that would be a good use for that vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a comment? And just so we kind of have a history of the property, the original idea when the city received it, we did look at mixed use. We tried to work with companies, um, tried to recruit people to do some kind of mixed-use, um, project with it, very much like what you're saying in apartment housing or something like that, and we couldn't get any bites. And so that's when the city had gotten some capital outlay money that was free money from the state to do some kind of design with the property, and so that's where this design came from. That's my recollection of the history of that property. So it's not something that I personally haven't thought about either. I think that that could be a possible project. One thought that I've always had is, let's not do too much to it in case another project came along that could be something like that, so. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, you would like to address?
I have a question. Can you remind us what Options 1, 2, and 3 are?
Sure. Do we have them on the --
I don't, I'm remoting to my computer, but I can show you what I do now.
We did go through an extensive public input on this as well. Process, it's been probably two years ago?
It was about a year ago.
A year ago?
Just, uh, the titles of them. Option 1 was a flexible parking market and event park. Option 2 was a play park with a community stage, and then Option 3 is an art park which has an open field and is, um, surrounded by public art. And, um, I'm willing to, if you want to take a look at these and pass them around.
Just a second. I don't remember that. If I could remember more details, it's been a while. And what year? How soon was it after?
I have a question. Wasn't there, you know, one big problem with Second Street is, you try and go to any business there, usually the business owners are parked in front of the place, and there's nowhere to park. Wasn't there some kind of ordinance that they couldn't park in front of their business? Or there was a two-hour parking thing?
Back when we had meters drawn, but I would have to look.
There's one place downtown that has a two-hour parking signs.
But nobody enforces it?
Yeah, nobody enforces it, I don't think.
You know, that's, that's a problem with the downtown. Everybody that tries to go down there, there's nowhere to park. That might be something to look at.
Turn your attention to the screen. Michael Ann's got the options up on the board now. It's Option 1, it's the flexible parking market event. There's a small stage on that one as well. This is Option 2, the playful park.
Now, I will note that on this one, in the center, you see those kind of khaki-looking circles. That's the pump track, which has already been slated for Romero Park. So there would be some modification to this, even though this overwhelmingly received the most votes by the community, and this was selected by the working group.
And these are just concepts. Obviously, if we move forward, if we give funding and move forward on anything, it would go through design and plan and a much deeper level of, of work and input.
And this is the art park.
Yeah. One, one thing the group didn't like about the art park was that there was a wall that kind of separate, well, which opens itself up to potential graffiti, but separated the businesses a little bit more.
And this was by far the least popular on the survey from this.
There was some concern, I believe, too, on the amount of water to water the green areas and that.
I mean, maybe it's helpful for the public to understand a little bit of the history of the property. I don't know that I can recall the dates that it, the building that was there that half burned down and then...
Call forward the deputy city manager who's...
I was there that night, that fire.
Who is my Raton Wikipedia page?
Mary, listen, long story short, you know, the El Portel historic building that succumbed to a fire. The property came into city ownership hands because at the time, that material after demolition was taken to the Raton landfill, accumulating a rather large bill for disposal services, and it was traded to the city in lieu of those disposal services. So we have no true investment in it. We do have concerns about the site, the way it was backfilled might hamper future development. All of them are pretty plans, but the EOR that I am will have to point out that my parks department of two people struggles to maintain what we have, and all of these options will create an issue. I mean, they'll look beautiful on day one, but much like Heritage Park, the more greenscape, the more weed-focused maintenance, even zero scape isn't zero work, and we are stretched pretty thin. But we will do our best to maintain anything that you choose. We do not have an identified funding source to go forward with this as of right now. You may recall, we spoke about an upcoming parks grant that we're actually in the running for, but due to the real lack of recreational tie-in, they kind of guided us another route. So our, our current application is redoing the trails at Roundhouse, adding a playground and fitness structures. We don't know the outcome of that grant. Since this time, we did receive the Romero Park grant, which is going to put a modular pump track on the old tennis courts at Romero Park, and we have the skate features that are scheduled to be here November 15 that are going to Optimus. So we've taken some of these elements and went elsewhere because we liked the plan. So we may have to kind of rework the plan one way or another to accomplish what we want there. But, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that, you know, we've, we've struggled to just keep the weeds down on this lot without taking criticism for it. And, you know, that's my criticism, I own it. But, you know, as I prioritize what we do on a day-to-day basis, these things get harder to put in the mix. That's my story.
Backfill was a big issue with potential disruption.
That was my biggest concern about building something there is, I saw how they backfilled that, and there was no compaction there.
And with proper engineering techniques and a deep foundation, a multimillion-dollar development could overcome those obstacles.
Sure.
I just hesitate, you know, we've, we've seen some subsidence already in this backfill. So if we don't do a lot of work, even below the hardscapes, concrete, stages, those things, we could regret that in the future.
From my experience, I'll point out, senior center, a project I'm familiar with, Chamisol, they built it on an old landfill. They said, "It's good, good to go." Six weeks after we opened the site, and it was a $1.5 million site, the north wall separated by eight inches.
Jesus.
So that's, that's my concern about putting a building on a lot.
Now, I would say this, you know, admittedly, we haven't had great success on this lot. There's things that we could do better. We could plant some maybe native grasses, you know, try to make it more presentable in the long run. It is full of elm trees, they're part of the beauty of it, but their roots are going to mangle a lot of stuff in the future. It's untenable to lot people to remove them. In my mind, they're a giant weed, but they do provide some shade. But there are some obstacles to overcome, funding one of them, but still some design challenges. This small capital outlay grant, all it really produced were schematic-type drawings. We don't really, didn't really drill down on costs or, or any of the hard-to-do items on it. It was a simple $25,000 grant, which got us public input, and we can chase money based on that public input. But more questions than answers, probably. That's the long, short story.
So are we trying to decide something so that we can apply from additional grant funding? Is that why we're discussing this tonight, or...
The city is looking for direction. And how do you want us to pursue? Do you want us to pursue one of these options? Do we scrap and look at a parking lot or a mixed-use complex? You know, we're, we're looking for direction.
Well, given that some of these better ideas have been slated for other parks, I don't, I don't see the point of redundancy.
And we already have a degree of duplicity in our park system. I mean, if, if we built a stage and something at El Portel, it would defeat the gazebo we invested in at Ripley. I, I would hesitate to say we're parks-heavy, because you can never have enough parks in the mind of most people. But it's, you know, we do have now a hole on Second Street that's going to be opened up, and I think some of the ideas that would work here would be a pocket park there, site that's going to have similar issues probably with compaction and buildability. So, I mean, we kind of are creating more open space. I am also a big advocate of getting public property back in the private sector and out of our hands. But it's obviously, I'm going to have to maintain that public property. Somebody else's problems, never a bad thing. But this is a half a city block in the middle of downtown that could become a lot of things if, if tides changed and, you know, mixed-use development in downtown, some kind of anchor tendon to draw traffic there would be great. If we did something small and, and movable with benches that could be used elsewhere, you could kind of serve two masters as we bide some time, and, you know, we could look at doing something like that as well.
Those are the ideas I've proposed, are things that would be easier done, something that would be movable if we were able to get.
And some of it is being parked on now by the business owners that utilize the backside of it from Second Street, and we haven't prohibited it. It doesn't hurt anything in my mind, but I think it does inhibit some of the grass growth on the far east side of the property. Nothing that's growing now has been specifically planted, but we could do a little better. It'd be a lot of irrigation system to install it. I mean, I'm sure you all are aware of how many hundreds of thousands of gallons we water at places like Ripley, so.
It's not going to be a cheap project.
Million-plus would be a pretty easy guess if we built anything of size.
When we were first looking at this, and we had, you know, I was really excited about having a park design, but now that we've, you know, pivoted over to Romero Park, which I think was a wonderful idea, I feel, I mean, my biggest issue is that people are like, "What are you guys going to do with it?" You know, there's a lot of pressure. We've had multiple public meetings and like, "What are we doing?" So I think deciding what we're doing, if it's native grass and trying to just make it, I just feel like it should look better than it does, since it's ours. Do we sell it? Do, you know, are we looking for a developer project? I mean, those are some good questions.
I think that's what would be best for the city is to seek those out, and they're difficult to come by. And I mean, I know we get minority number pressure that have loud voices to accomplish things, but I think it's important to point out what we have accomplished and what we're in process on. You know, pickleball, those folks are extremely happy with what we've got going there. The new tennis courts are great. Romero Park's lead time, ideally, I wouldn't build a skate park on November 15, but when you have 11-month lead time, you take it as soon as you can get it. And, you know, I think we're going to see great things happen in the next few months with Romero Park and all of that. But, you know, what happens is, I think people go to another community and they have one really nice park, that you pile everything on, a community shelter and all these features. We've got five really large parks, and, you know, your playground set looks emphasized in Romero Park, but part of Romero Park is rehabilitating what's there, adding another one. And I think, you know, that's how you get there in this thing, is one shade structure at a time. We, we're chasing money, but a half million dollars doesn't go nearly as far. I do think a simple municipal grade bench that's kind of vandalism-proof, by the time you get it shipped here, it's $3,500. It's not a Lowe's picnic table that you put out there, or else it disappears the next day. So, I mean, I think we could do a lot for all of our parks and save this, but we can do something better there. It's just that, you know, gravel always seems to be the answer. I struggle more at Heritage Park with zero turf grass than I do at any of my parks, at least the other ones. It's water, mowing, get off, hand-weeding with a crew my size. You know, we, we struggle with that, admittedly. A giant asphalt parking lot.
Nascent ain't cheap either.
Yeah, if you can get it, if you can get it, this is true.
You know, this is one of those projects that has been on the books for a while. I mean, true, we may have just picked one a year ago, but we've been basically working on this since about 2016, 2017.
And we've chased some serious economic development prospects. I mean, there were some senior living folks from New York that came out and, you know, we kiss a lot of frogs looking for a prince in this thing, but we haven't found one.
And it's one of those that'd be nice to check it off the list if we could find the right project.
I agree. And I mean, and we'll do our best with whatever you decide. I mean, that's...
Besides vacant buildings, this is what I get asked the most. What are you going to do with it?
Proximity to the post office, the number of people that see it. And, you know, and one by one, I answer those criticisms. You know, I would rather repair storm drainage that doesn't flood a house than mow the weeds at El Portel just to silence my critics, but I prioritize life and safety first and deal with the rest as it comes.
I'd almost suggest auction, auctioning the thing, but I guess what concerns me is that repeat other properties in town, but I'll use the Spanish Bunkalo as an example. Guy in Denver bought that thing and didn't realize what he was buying. And now we got it on the demolition list.
It's a mixed bag for me. I mean, I appreciate all that Jaden does to clean up this town and these demolitions, but at the same time, I see dollars that could be building something for someone to use for the next 20 years, and we're serving multiple masters in this thing. Clearly, it makes town look better.
I don't know. Jason, I think you and I have talked about it. When the group with the railroad in the 1800s bought the 400 acres that made the original town site, one of the things they did not do was, in their recorded plaque, include a town square. And the logical thing was, okay, well, there's our town square. But, kind of back to Jason's point, we're not Romans, so if we build it, maybe they won't come anyway. I mean, I hate to be pessimistic like that, but being a realist, though, we've just built ourselves another maintenance requirement.
Well, my underline is, if you can see a park from where you're standing in a park, you probably don't need another park.
Right behind you first there, Shane, right behind.
I've been advocating for the use, but we've always wanted a skate park there. And I've researched that, I get it's a lot too. And the cost is like an average of $400,000 or so to bring in the equipment. But that's something that's everlasting and fulfilling. You have a lot of kids really bored, so they are doing activities, they are damaging property, like they're not taking care of things. But if we invest in our youth and recreation, it really makes a difference. So that's my impression.
We are addressing that.
We have some skate elements coming.
Skatewear. Park elements coming in.
Great.
200,000 deep and a large half-pipe and skate run at Optimus Park.
Very nice. Thank you.
Shane?
Goro Tum was approached by a local musician, a fairly well-known musician, who wants to build an outdoor music venue right here in town in Raton, and he loves performing here. Is that something the city might entertain?
Been advocating for that for a while.
Maybe I can chat with whoever is needed, and we can see if... See, I don't know what's, how many seating arrangement he's looking for, but he does want an outdoor amphitheater. So it might be something that...
I think it's something, you know, that ties into our gate city music.
Yeah, it does.
The Saturday and Sunday before, we could, that's what I advocated for, something designed for music, outdoors.
Yep.
You know, and First Street is great. I love First Street and all that, but it's not as inviting as an outdoor amphitheater would be.
With the right partnership agreement, we may be able to attract other artists, seem to be able to utilize it on the weekends when the...
Absolutely.
Performers are here.
And that would kind of tie into our town square idea, you know?
Now, I, I don't want to mention names yet, but there's a group that's looking at an amphitheater in South Raton, but they want something with seating capacity that exceeds the shore, you know? And they've got their funding in place, but how much older will be when that happens? I don't know.
Sure.
You know, because I asked them about this particular deal. Would they be interested in diverting their money to this and do an amphitheater there in their contention was too small and with parking and so forth?
I mean, the key elements of a great amphitheater are usually natural features and grade that you can utilize rather than building up from a flat space. We've talked about the possibilities of that at Roundhouse Park, with the mass balance of excavation and hill building to create kind of that Fiddler's Green-type approach. There's some drainage issues you'd have to overcome with digging a hole near a river, but this site probably too small for anything that isn't more theater-style than amphitheater with something that's going up in the air rather than a common one.
Yeah, I actually know about, sorry, I know about that as well, and I, I mean, I haven't talked to the city about it, but I think they're actually looking for something with like an outdoor view as well. But it, that could be a really cool project, wherever it is in town.
It may be smaller than they want, but with the right partnership and with the right input from the city and this person, it might be a stepping stone to something larger. I did speak to the owner of La Mesa Raceway a little while ago, and he did say, if the right project was presented to him and it really struck a chord with him, he'd be interested in doing some sort of arrangement with the city. This may, I'm not, I don't know if he's a real music fan, but it, it might, it might strike with him as well. But as I say, this El Portel site, if you can get somebody else's funding to go ahead and fit it out with the right public use as well, it just may be a good little investment.
So what kind of... So what kind of direction have you gotten from us, sir, Mr. City Manager?
We don't have a good direction yet, and so we're not ready to make a decision yet.
But I think starting the conversation was a lot of this where it doesn't just fall off the plate. You know, if we're going forward with general fund monies, we establish a budget, get a design professional to, you know, work within those confines. If it's a placeholder, you know, we can allocate some funds to try to make, I mean, I would generally start in the spring, try to plant some native grasses, help them along with some artificial irrigation on a non-permanent scale to get them established and then, you know, buy some time.
I do, you know, my big three elements for economic development since I've been here are workforce broadband and housing. And I believe we need housing. I think this would be a great site. There are a lot of engineering things to overcome, but, I mean, you know, I work for you guys. We got the broadband thing solved.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like we're going to be having another discussion on this.
Can we agree that we want it to look as nice as possible in the meantime?
Absolutely.
Is that a possibility?
That's what I, I don't want to just throw something together just to get something done. But the other question I keep getting asked, well, you guys already picked a thing. How come you're not building that?
Part of it because the 25,000 didn't get us anywhere.
And that's what I said. That was for the design.
We took the cool parts and we, where we had money, we put those. So it wasn't wasted effort, you know? The pump track was, and I hope once it's built in a month, people love it as much as they seemed to when they wanted it. Same with the skate features, you know, because to truly build a skate park, we're looking at millions, a concrete skate park of any size. But, you know, what my funding agencies tell me is prove the need, not the want, and then ask for the money. So if we can show that these features are being used, we have trackable data, placer AI, then we go to ask for the bigger money, the odds of us getting it goes way up.
All right.
So we could bring this up at a planning meeting?
Yeah, I think...
Motion to table this discussion to a planning meeting.
How about to postpone?
To postpone, sorry. Motion to postpone this discussion to a planning meeting.
Yeah, motion and second to postpone item at later date.
I'm sorry, who made the motion and second?
Mayor Porte. Second with Commissioner, how do you find it?
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor, vote by sound of aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate act on appointment to the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Board. Mr. Mestas.
Mayor and Commissioner, this item seeks to confirm an appointment to the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Board for Ms. Jerry Thymon, which is essential to maintaining community engagement and oversight of library operations as outlined in the Raton Municipal Policy and State Library governing standards. The city recommends voting in affirmative on this section.
Looks more than qualified.
She is. Enthusiastic.
Jerry Thymon's appointment to the library board.
Timian is how it's pronounced.
Timian, sorry. Motion and second to appoint, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by sound of aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard. Item H, deliberate act on change order number one, the property cleanup located at 108 Pecos Avenue. Mr. Mestas.
Mayor and Commissioner, this action addresses change order number one for the property cleanup project at 108 Pecos Avenue, reflection, reflecting additional costs or scope adjustments necessary for the project completion. Total cost for this action is $9,310.21. This action is consistent with procurement procedure. City recommends voting in affirmative.
What was the original amount?
Do you know what the original was? I'm sorry, I don't have that available right now. I put 60-something.
No way, and if you would, can you do the other item too, just to where we're at? I'd like to know how big of a balloon we're...
Yeah.
Head in the basket too.
Are these cleanup fees, are they then leaned on the property owner?
Yes, we're all leaning.
Put a lien after? And how long does that lean? Do you know any specifics on the leaning?
I don't know exactly. Unfortunately, our city engineer is not here tonight, but I know that they have a formula with an attorney that we have on, on contract with us to move on these. And it's not a quick process by any means, but I think we could...
Try to go after the money once we leave.
Yes.
But to answer that question, if you don't act on your lien seven years, then you can't go away.
But, you know, the formula is... Anyone know any good jokes?
Was this one of the three properties that was set out for bid?
Yes. This is located at 108 Pecos. This is a change order.
How does this pass reflected by comparison to the bids that were received for it?
That's what she's getting to check.
I guess while we're waiting, the description in this doesn't really allude to why the reason for the change.
Doesn't tell, what are they doing? For the 10-second explanation is that the property was re-trashed. So it was cleaned and then the owner re-trashed it? Somewhat, yes.
So on the... So on the dangerous building and premises property cleanup project, we did award that to Desert Vaughn, and the awarded amount excluding GRT was $49,885. And that was for two properties, the 1521 Cedar and the 108 Pecos.
So we're re-cleaning this, what are the chances that it's going to stay clean or how?
I can't guarantee any, you know, any, I mean, we can't control the citizens and what they do with their property. I mean, we could go either way on this. Our intent is to clean the city.
I just have a concern if we're re-cleaning it.
Then we'll, there's another, you know, it'll get trashed again.
Oh, it will.
In this...
Yeah, I mean...
Process, so perhaps we just lean and keep going and clean it again, I don't know.
My argument has always been, we've been doing this massacres for decades, and my attorney daughter, when she looked at over, we'll use Clovis, Mexico as an example, in their jurisdiction, it's a criminal offense. A police officer writes a ticket, they get the choice of jail or clean it. If the city cleans it, they get to camp out in jail until those fees are paid. Leaning and foreclosing is an option, but it's still a criminal offense. If we approached it in that manner, this guy's in jail, then we wouldn't be addressing this frequently. But, I mean, we've got it in a civil avenue, it's kind of like rolling dice. And, I mean, we just paid, what, 40-some thousand bucks to that consultant in Albuquerque? What did he give, what did he get for a dollar? He was supposed to be reviewing the...
They're, they're ready to produce product on that.
I, I don't know if it's going to fix our problem regarding these, but it just appears very cumbersome and clumsy with the process that we're using now to try to get these lanes established and this kind of thing. The other point that I'd like to make though, and I'm going to use my greedy banker background, emphasis on greedy, we need to be pursuing default judgments. So when you lean the property and foreclose it, you foreclose that property at fair market value, not the cost we got in it. Okay? So in this particular case, let's say for instance, we've got $30,000 in the cleanup the property's worth 10. We foreclose it for the $10,000 amount, we get a deficiency judgment to go after anything else. This guy may own now or forever for the other $20,000. And it puts us in a realistic position so that when that property needs to be liquidated, we got some semblance of making ourselves whole. But like I said, with the way we have our process set up now, it just doesn't make a lot of sense, or at least according to my lawyer daughter.
I will go with the city attorney and with Jayden and city engineer. We'll address that.
I'm kind of worried, I mean, this is a little shocking, we're paying to, yeah, stay ahead of the guide, let her know.
Not a good point, and I'm having a senior moment. It happens to the best of us, right? All right. No, I, I can't see throwing dollars after, with there, there's no repercussions to the property owner, really. I mean, I will go with our attorney and see what option he has.
Really, we want to clean up town, but we just can't keep re-cleaning for people? That's not on us. I mean, there's only so much we can do.
I tell my wife I'm taking the trash out too much, but it doesn't stop her from filling the trash can. And that's what's happening here. We're cleaning these properties up and they're saying, well, they cleaned it up for me, I'm just going to go ahead and throw it out there again and take care of it. There's got to get, I think we've reached our limit there.
So Rick, your evaluation on this though, Desert Vaughn had completed...
Yes. But we, you know, we, the contract, we could still use the existing contract, and that's why we went by this change order.
I'm kind of like Neil, I hate to see everybody throwing down the hole here. There's no incentive to, I mean, if this guy's staring at jail time, maybe, but I don't know, I don't know if that's in our cards, the way we have these ordinances written.
And then we got away, how many phone calls Rick's going to get from the neighbors and that the property's messed up? I get a few. Entertain a motion either way. What's the pleasure of the commission?
No motion. It's my pleasure.
Let it die without a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the consent of the commission, see that this die? All righty. Moving on to item aye, deliberate act on change order number one for the Bisconte Building demolition located at 222 South Second Street, the J. C. Fenton Building. Mr. Mestas.
Okay, Mayor and Commissioner, this is different. This action involves approval of change order one for the demolition of the Biscotti Building located at 222 South Second Street. The change order accounts for project modifications due to structural conditions discovered during demolition. In short, this change order is for additional costs of removing the sidewalk and the south wall that were originally supposed to remain intact. They cannot remain intact due to the fact that the main floor trusses were sitting underneath the block of the south wall. This includes, this will include 50-plus tons of brick removal and an estimated 480 cubic yards of backfill. There's also a need for a fence to secure the area for this change order. The total cost is $36,491.68. All changes follow state procurement regulations, and we do have permission of the property owner to install the fence on the south side.
We're the property owner of what? Can we grant ourselves permission?
No, no, no. The property, the sidewalk is on the property to the south.
Okay, what they're calling the sidewalk was a water diversion. That's not a sidewalk on that south side. So that encroaches on Sanderson? What you're saying, that concrete?
They call it a, they call it a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Do we have an original price on this project? Mayor and Commissioner, just so you know, we do have an agreement in place signed by Mr. Sanderson, so we do have that on file. The original bid award for this was to Kraken Creations. The total amount with GRT was $209,235.62.
Yeah, I don't think we can't do it.
I think I will move to approve change order number one for the Biscotti Building demolition located at 222 South Second Street.
All second.
A motion and a second to approve? Is there any further comments, questions?
Yeah, I've got several.
I have a question too.
Contractor prudence, Kraken should have caught that, but the elevations were off. Now, they have the option of cutting those idings at ground level instead of pulling them out of the foundation, but they're trying to maximize their metal shortage. So that created the drop-off, but I don't understand why we're fencing that, pull the concrete out, it has to be backfilled, grade anyway. There's no reason for a fence. There's no hazard that's being created or left because of a hole. It's backfilled, degraded, so it'll all look like one deal. So if Phil Long was approached to say, you know, we're going to park vehicles over there, it makes it easy for them. We chain link it, now we're paying somebody to pull the chain link out so that it can be usable. I don't see the point of the chain link fence.
I do see it as a safety issue because what you're going to create there is a big hole, and while they're doing the construction, you got to take safety into consideration and keep people away.
But it's a temporary fence, that's not what is being asked.
What you have up now, until we make a decision.
Well, they have a temporary fence already there, is the point. They, they have fenced that off to keep bypassers or looky-loos out of there. That temporary fence exists. But my point is, when they pull that concrete drainage out of there, bring the block down and whatnot, they've got to backfill that basement to grade, there won't be a hole when they're finished. In other words, it will look like one continuous grade of property.
So I guess the question is, do you all want a permanent fence or a temporary fence?
Well, the temporary fence is going to go when they're done. There's not going to be a hole there to fence off.
Yeah, there's not supposed to be a hole when they leave, so. Yeah, there's not supposed to be a hole when they leave, so. I'm gonna mark, why are we building a fence? When the project is finished, it's gonna be degraded.
One grade, yeah.
That was the recommendation by the contractor, is to have a fence.
Well, if the.
And that was requested, um, that was requested by the city engineer, and I think that's to get a, a permanent boundary. Now, whether or not it's needed.
Yeah, we'll point to the boundary there. You know, I, I don't see spending eleven thousand dollars for something that's really unnecessary.
I think the first part, we, we, we're kinda stuck with it. I mean, if you guys wanna approve it without the fence, that's up to you.
Well, I was just gonna ask Commissioner Schuster if she would like to amend her motion to exclude.
Do we know, does the current leadership wanna use that? Are they?
I don't think we've talked to them yet.
I asked the city manager to visit with them about it, to see if they'd put their.
Jayden was the one that was doing this, and Jayden was the one that requested the fence.
Yeah, I wish you wouldn't delegate like that. I mean, just Greg won't bite, go down and give the meeting and see if they're willing to back it. But I, I like to say, I don't see the point of a fence. You know, it's gonna be backfilled, degrade anyway, there is no hole.
I would move to change my motion to exclude the fence until a later date, till we know exactly what's the purpose of the fence. So to approve the, I guess, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ten.
Plus tax.
Yeah, plus tax. At this time, and, and postpone a decision on the fence until we have more information on what its purpose is. Because if it's for safety.
Well, absolutely, but.
I'm all in favor of it, but if it's just to look pretty, then.
When the project's finished, it should be degraded.
Right.
I would second. I meant my second to amend to that.
And we have a motion, well, we have an amended motion to approve step one, is what I'm gonna call it, the sidewalk part of the, um, project. Twenty-two, two-ten, fifty-six, plus any taxes that may be associated with that. Any further questions? All in favor, vote by the sound of I.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Item J, deliberate an act on New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration Capital Outlay Grant Agreement number two-five-j-two-nine-one-six to plan, construct, and improve city buildings, including the convention center. Mr. Mestus.
Mayor Commission, this action seeks approval to enter into the capital outlay agreement number twenty-five-j-two-nine-one-six with New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. The grant funds will be used to plan, construct, and improve city-owned facilities, specifically the convention center, unless we pivot, consistent with capital improvement plans under the New Mexico statutes. The city recommends voting in the affirmative on this section.
Questions?
If we pivot, what, that was kind of a little caveat there, so what are we thinking out about?
Well, this, this grant is kinda vague, but it was primarily for the convention center. If, if it's necess, if we can pivot, we will certainly, you know, maybe go after another public building for another project.
Any ideas what that would be? Cause, and that would come back to us if we've switched.
It would be something on our ICIP, you know, it'd be something.
Cause I just know the convention center, I think, is a good project, cause the doors and all, there's a lot of need there, so I was surprised that we might pivot on something.
It's just because the, it's vague.
So this isn't being approved, it's just a study?
Uh, no, this is improvements.
Whatever improvements.
Whatever it lasts.
Yeah.
I see Jason walked in the door there.
It's been a long enough night for y'all. Um, Mayor Commission, so on the ICIP, we have some placeholder projects, building improvements, miscellaneous. The convention center is a facility that eats money like Pac-Man. Phase one, we replaced some HVAC units. We left some control systems and thermostats out of that project because we didn't have money. We have a backup system capable for the elevator, but our last grant didn't supply enough funds to provide the battery backup and the additional electrical work to do that. So we can definitely use this at the convention center, but it is a vague grant. So I mean, if, to save the general fund some money on HVAC at the Highlands unit, or to move unspent funds to a second project, there's probably a process through DFA that we could get to include it, because the language is vague, but it's entirely possible that we could spend every bit of it at convention center. I mean, we looked at the front doors, that price was astronomically higher than we anticipated, so we didn't go forward that project once we got to that phase.
How much was it?
I wanna say it was well over a hundred thousand dollars to redo the hardware on the front doors.
Just the hardware?
Well, doors, new, uh, security access for the convention center, or we could give you a code or a card that when you were at the facility, it'll only get you into the portions that we have. Dave Little designed that, I wanna say about two and a half years ago, and once we saw the price point, we pivoted and put some money in our old doors to try to get them by. But, uh, it is kind of general city buildings, but it does call out the convention center in the legislative language. It'd be the cleanest project at convention center, but if we had, say, ten thousand left over, we could probably, just at a minor scope change, get that money moved to an HVAC unit here at City Hall or something.
The HVAC units you guys put on, the, how old were the ones that were replaced?
We put in a new boiler system that was probably the original version in ninety-three, and it was replaced with a dual boiler system, so the guts of the system are there, the ability to heat and cool. It's either or at the convention center, you can't really flip between the two. But it's got in roof dampeners and thermostats that are, right now, just, it's kind of an always-on situation there, which seems to work well enough when, when you need it.
So the new system, we should see utility savings, or is that a stretch?
I would sell that as, as a big savings. I mean, I think you, you'll see moderate zoneability of the building, but it's just a large concrete mass, it's probably not coming down much. With the boiler system that we have, in order for it to, to stay heated for an eight o'clock use, we pretty much set it at probably sixty-five and, and forget it is, is pretty much how it goes. The cooling system is a water tower chiller that is that same nineteen ninety-three construction has. It just allows some flexibility, but by and large, I think it's safe to say this is for the most part a convention center grant.
I make a motion to approve the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration Capital Outlay Grant Agreement number twenty-five-j-two-nine-one-six to plan, construct, and improve city buildings, including the convention center.
Hold second.
Motion and a second, sit it up. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate an act on resolution twenty-twenty-five-sixty-two, adopting changes to the travel policy relating to the reimbursement and travel for per diem and mileage expenses for public officers and employees of the city while on city business.
Mayor Commission, this resolution updates the city travel policy to align with per diem mileage reimbursement for public officers and employees with current rates set by the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. And this covers everything from how we calculate mileage, from point A to B, point B, how much we can spend on tips, how much we have receipts for incidentals, and things like that. It's a whole list, a laundry list of things that will bring us into compliance with the state rules.
If we just did that ourselves.
So we're just getting this aligned with what the state has again, yeah, every year?
Comments, questions?
I will move to approve city resolution number twenty-twenty-five-sixty-two.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five-sixty-two. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, deliberate an act on resolution twenty-twenty-five-sixty-three, authorization to close New Mexico Bank and Trust municipal court accounts.
Mayor Commission, this resolution authorizes the closure of inactive and obsolete municipal court accounts held with New Mexico Bank and Trust. This action aligns with standard financial management practices and ensuring consolidation and efficiency within our banks. This will also complete the transition of all city accounts to in-bank, and the following two accounts will be closed, the municipal court fund and the municipal court bond fund. The city recommends voting in the affirmative on this action.
Questions, comments?
I'd push to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five-sixty-three, authorization to close New Mexico Bank and Trust municipal court. Second.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five-sixty-three. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N, deliberate an act on resolution twenty-twenty-five-sixty-four, fiscal year twenty-six budget adjustment number three. Michael, or Rick?
Mayor, in commission, I yield the floor to Raton City Chief of Staff, Ms. Michael Ann Toomey.
And Mayor Commission, in your packet this evening, we do bring to you budget adjustment number three. I had initially included some adjustments for the action on the convention center capital outlay, but I, I took that out because we need to wait till we have the agreement actually fully executed, and then I'll bring that back to you to incorporate into FY twenty-six budget. But I did still have some other line item adjustments needed for the general fund. I did make a note, we did have an unbudgeted expense related to a airport fuel farm inspection that was a little over four thousand dollars, so we would need to incorporate that additional expense into the budget. And then previously, we had approved the animal shelter project. You'll recall that that project did come in slightly over the amount that we have available in the two grants, so we would need to transfer an additional fifteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight out of the general fund, and that is for the animal shelter isolation building project. Also, within our fire fund, I have a few additional revenue line items that we need to adjust, and I'm just allocating it in various expenses. The recreation fund, we also did have some additional repairs and service related to the pulsar acid feeder and the U V service this year. It's not really a capital building improvement, so I'm just gonna move some monies into the equipment maintenance repair line item. With that, EMS, we did get a little bit more money this year than we had initially budgeted, so instead of sixty-four thousand, our grant this year was ninety-seven thousand, six thirty-nine. That's all I have. I stand for questions.
Questions, Mayor Michael Ann.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five-sixty-four, fiscal year twenty-six budget adjustment number three. Second.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five-sixty-four. Further discussion?
Michael Ann, that over John EMS, is it limited to being used on vehicles or the foot?
I went ahead and put it towards the purchase of the new ambulance. I do know that we have a little bit of a shortfall there. The county, I think, previously had committed some funds towards that, but we're not a hundred percent sure with their financial situation if we'll receive that money. So later on, once the ambulance is delivered and paid for, if we don't need the additional funds, we have other line items, we could move it into, so.
Any other comments? A motion and a second, all in favor, vote by the sound of I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N, deliberate an act on resolution twenty-twenty-five-sixty-five, supporting an application HHS-two-zero-two-five-acf-orr-zu-zero-zero-four-two. Casa de Luz, residential shelter for unaccompanied minors. Mr. Mestus.
Mayor Commission, this resolution expresses the city of Raton's support for the application for federal grant for this HHS grant by Casa de Luz, which proposes to establish a residential shelter for unaccompanied minors. The initiative aligns with the city's commitment to humanitarian services and complies with applicable federal and state regulations. The city recommends voting in the affirmative on the section, and we have missed and I still answered questions about the grant.
Questions, comments?
Or do, actually, if anybody wants to comment on this, should we do that first?
Yeah.
Okay, public comments?
Well, thank you all, Mr. Mayor, fellow commissioners. I just wanted to come and, and just say thank you for putting this on air, supporting this application. I know it's, it's gonna be lift, definitely, for the city of Raton, if you go that route. Is it worth it? I think it is. I mean, I think, so Rick mentioned a humanitarian standpoint, that's great, but at the end of the day, the way I see it, is it's an economic development. So with the amount of money that's with this grant and the time that's, it's over, overdone, I mean, it's, what, sixty million a year?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven million.
Over three years.
Over three years.
Over three years. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of jobs here in the local community. That's, to me, that's equivalent to bringing in a manufacturer. So yes, there is some good parts to it, too, on the humanitarian side, but I, I see it from an economic standpoint, so. And from the commissioner's standpoint, I don't speak on behalf of the full commission, just myself as a commissioner. I did submit a letter of support for this, for, on my behalf, so that is all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm in support of the Regional Agency Intervention Network, D B A Ray, Dr. Conder Tonight, and Jill, Reverend Jill Klein, and their executive board. They are in strong support. They submitted a support letter, and it's just really wonderful how Ms. Lenore Barfield really had strong connections and ties with this grant, to where there was already a grant committee willing to write this grant and to move forward, and to see that in grants is amazing, cause usually we're really researching and trying to find them, and I just feel this is really meant to happen. And then Anne has a lot of great expertise and experience in navigating through these kind of resources, and so it would be a great support to our community, plus we would use a building that, you know, has a lot of history and can be of good use, instead of having to destroy that building. It will be back in use and helping the youth, and it's wonderful that this system's already established to have these youth in place. I'm used to working off referrals and trying to find the youth to support, and this grant already offers the youth to bring into our community to support this. So I'm in strong support also as an advocate for the youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
So, do you want to show this even over?
Mayor Commission, yes, we would like to ask for your support to submit the application for this grant. The grants will not be awarded until their saying, and I don't know if the shutdown's gonna impact this, but right now, it should be April. So at that time, then, we would come back to the commission to approve the actual acceptance of this grant, but it will be, it's over sixty-six million dollars, over three years. There's a million dollars in there just to support city staff. So bringing in a grant manager, bringing in, you know, budget people, community partners, workers, so over a million dollars over the three years, just for the city component. And there is zero match on this. Like, this is kind of completely unheard of in the federal grant, that there's this large of a grant dollar without any sort of a match whatsoever. All we have to do is commit to, you know, making this work. And the other great thing is that through this process, we have brought together eight local partners. You know, we didn't know, we had so many people in this community that actually could do this. You know, we didn't know we had so many people in this community that actually could do this kind of work. But between, Raton Schools has signed a letter of support and a scope of work and a budget. The county has, as I said, wrote a letter of support. Rain, Youth Heartline, Tabby, Telemed, Nightingales, Sacred Journey, Elrato Media Works, and Grover Tone have all written letters of support to help these efforts. And there would be a national partner that would help sort of oversee the heavy lifting and the certification of the facility and then help build local capacity here in Raton, so that, you know, we have more support, more workers, professional folks that could come in, attract the healthcare workers that we desperately need. And there's, the grant writer told me that they've seen on this grant that there's a 15 to 1 economic development ratio multiplier on this. So it's something that really could bring a lot of economic revitalization to our community. And in addition, it's put me in touch with the building owner, that building that's been sitting vacant, the old skilled nursing center that has been vacant for almost five years, has holes in the roof, and he has agreed to repair those if we get this grant, and in exchange for a fair lease that will be paid through this grant, not by the city. So, um, did I miss anything? And again, this is just to submit the grant application at this time. That is due at 10 o'clock tonight. And it's like a 168-page grant.
I see this as a possibility of bringing back some of the healthcare workers and healthcare providers that we've lost. So I think this provides opportunity for people that are from the area who can come back and have a meaningful place to practice their skills.
It would, it's scheduled to create 50 jobs in addition to the five city jobs. So 55 jobs total.
No one knows that building as well as I do, and it's, I think it's a perfect building for this project.
Needs some love, some serious love.
The shape of the building is, it's perfect.
So what I understand, though, the city would be on the hook to handle payroll, monthly billings?
Well, yes. And that's what would be, I mean, they would sub-contract, so the city would be the prime, and then we would sub-award to this national company called Metalworks. So they would do their own payroll for their people, but then we would do it, we would have to pay the sub, right? And any contractors, any subs, any contractors, the city would have to pay. And then, of course, whatever staff the city actually hired, is my understanding.
Well, I guess that's where I'm vague. So day-to-day medical staff from janitorial or not, that would be?
That would be under, yes, that would be under the sub.
So we would just have to be responsible for reimbursing the sub?
Yep.
And that's reimbursable from the grant?
Yes. That's all paid through the grant, yes. So you hire the subcontractor, or the prime, the sub-awarty, I guess I should say. And I, and I, you know, it's, I can't, I definitely can't say that we're guaranteed to get this if we go for it. We're, you know, it's $1.5 billion across the whole country, but New Mexico gets extra points because there's not facilities like this here. So there are some things we have going for us, and, you know, we have a small, safe, beautiful community to welcome these kids that have been really traumatized by being separated from their families or human trafficked, or whatever the case may be.
And then my conversation with Anne earlier, I understand it's kind of revolving in the theory that they're not here long-term, that it could be a couple of months. It might start, possibly a little longer than, maybe a seven, then.
We're, yeah, we're listing ourselves as a 24-bed, so there's, actually, was, there were 80 beds in that old facility. We're only putting 24 beds on the grant. That gives you bonus points, but then you do, like, rotate through, so there could be a couple hundred kids a year going through that as they get reunited with their families or get placed in foster care, things like that. So they're here to kind of get stabilized and use all of our community resources and build up our, our local talent to be able to help them.
And you answered one of my questions, I guess. One of my questions was the building itself. If I heard you right, the grant will pay for us leasing the building? Or do we have, in initial conversations with Mr. Estes, I thought we were going to have to purchase the building. We can't purchase a building?
Yeah, that's not, it's not allowed under the grant to purchase it.
That was my original understanding, but I was incorrect. That was my biggest concern, because we've got enough buildings.
Yeah.
But I would like to see if maybe we could, if this grant did happen, and, you know, I'm skeptical, but if we were to get this grant, you know, we might be able to leverage with the state for other funding for other facilities, and, you know, my opinion is, you know, you miss 100% of the balls you don't swing at.
Right.
One of the pluses, though, that I'm seeing by this, because that was an 80-bed facility, and a grant that was two beds to a room, but because they're only using partial, it would also provide for some onsite housing for professional staff.
Exactly.
And also, I mean, we don't, we're not creating a housing shortage or a housing problem for ourselves, at least not initially.
Right.
I can just, speaking from experience, having worked for a bank in Springer, when the boys' school was functioning, that floated that town's economy when that boys' school was in business. I'm not saying this is bad, but with the support staff that's required and whatnot, it would give us the shots in the arm if it's something that's wrong.
Yeah, and I'll just be honest, I had reservations at first. We're rushing through, it doesn't sound like we have a real good plan in place, you know? But the more I've talked today and I've listened to the transcript of the, the transcript of the meeting you all had, you've answered some of the other questions I had, yeah, I can see the benefits of it. I'm still, you know. Still a little, like Mr. Estes said, skeptical. But I'm, I guess there's still more questions I'd like to know. What happens, say, if staff is here and we get the kids, and then staff, some of them decide, hey, this isn't working for us, and we're gone, what happens to the facility and the kids and all of that? Do we have any idea?
No. I mean, I mean, it's like any place that you, right? I mean, what if you don't have enough teachers at the school? What if you don't have enough nurses at the hospital? I mean, it's, it definitely is a problem. There is a budget in here for recruitment, which we know is going to be a problem. And again, through Dr. Hackett, who's leading the grant-writing team and has connected us with this national network, they are, he's writing multiple grants, and they are doing this. So we're not going to be alone, right? I think that problem is going to persist everywhere. I mean, there's a shortage of workers everywhere. So, and again, I think, I mean, well, if we submit this tonight, we have six months until it's even awarded to make an actual decision, do we want to take this on? This is just to get the application in there, and so we should, I totally encourage that we should really nitpick this plan, get to know who these national partners are, get to know all the people, what they're going to do, and be very clear by the time April rolls around or whatever they announce the award. This is really, we feel good about this plan, and it's not going to be a burden. It's going to be an uplifting economic driver for us and a positive experience for these young traumatized kids.
That's the quote I would like to take, you know? Submit the application, but between now and April, we've got to do our due diligence and find out exactly what we're getting into.
Well, in the best that you understand, Anne, Metalworks, this is their forte.
Yeah, they have the types of certifications, the, it's a, Lindy knows what it is. It's a CARF certification.
The Children's Workshop and the Colfax County Workshop have been CARF accredited. So I think, I'm not positive, I think they've changed over to a different type of accreditation. It's similar, just a different, basically a different company, but, but the community has supported CARF accredited facilities in the past, I believe we can do it again.
There were some questions back here?
I had a question about how, how is the school system going to be able to handle those kids coming in, you know, budget-wise, teacher, supply, all, all of that? That's quite a load in our school system.
Well, first of all, all the kids, it's only 24 beds. Okay, so it's only 24 kids at a time. It's not that big, and it's an age range from eight to 17. So it's not like there's going to be all of a sudden, you know, ha, I mean, I guess our classes are around 50, a little less maybe, so it's not even going to have the amount of kids in one grade. It's going to be spread out through the grades. And the superintendent submitted a budget, she submitted a plan, and also there is in the plan to have two onsite educators, because some of these kids are not going to be able to be immediately integrated into the schools. So they'll be working with those teachers for educators and then working with people like Danielle to, you know, get through some of the problems that they've had and try to make them, you know, be able to integrate into the schools eventually, so there, there is.
If they needed online education, I'm sorry, Anne, but if they needed online education, we're all working, already working with Mascaro, Pecos, all the schools in New Mexico, New Mexico Connections, and then the Learning Lab is already in place as a support.
Yep. And there are other, again, other national online programs as well that have been added into the program as recommended by Dr. Hackett, in terms of, there's another group called Elevate Aid that they do a lot of educational support systems for kids that are going through things like this as well, so.
Will interpretive be needed?
Yes, exactly.
Have allocated that fund to the public?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Majority of them will most likely be Spanish speakers. Did you have any questions?
Do we, do you know if we have any guarantee that this facility would remain a facility for unaccompanied minors? Could it possibly change for another three years down the line in terms of other sort of facility?
Absolutely.
And that would be out of our control?
Well, I mean, we, we don't own the building, we're leasing the building, so we'll have a lease term with the landlord, which I have a letter of lease, you know, an intent to lease to this, to us. He lives, this guy lives in Houston, he is actually extremely excited about this. He's been sad about this building being empty, and he's really excited to see this come to life and for such a humanitarian purpose. So he's really excited, and CYFD, although they did not submit a letter of support for this because of bureaucratic process and time constraints on their part, they are supportive, and they said that, so right now this grant is a three-year grant. And then there's another three-year slated federally, but that could go away. Who knows with, you know, the administration changes, how that, so it's possible it could be for another three years, and who knows? But CYFD had mentioned that there is not a single girl's shelter in the entire state of New Mexico, and they would be really excited to potentially see that become a girl's shelter down the road. And that's just one possibility that's just been discussed, so there's definitely.
Do we, as a city, have control over the, over what building, you know, what?
No, because it's not our building. So after the lease is over, then yes, we wouldn't have any control over that. We'd have to renegotiate a lease.
You said that the owners agreed to fix the roof. Who is responsible for the rest of the fit-out to make it suitable for?
The grant.
The grant, okay, the grant.
The grant, yeah. Exactly.
There's a lot of windows that gotta be replaced.
At least they're not historic like at Kearney.
So I'm going to be the unpopular one here, and I don't support this. There's a lot of reasons, and it has nothing to do with it being philanthropic. I love this idea of philanthropy, I think children are the future, they're very important. These children, unaccompanied refugees, you know, I'm not sure that Raton is the solution for this, is my biggest issue. We have amazing partners in our community, we have a lot of pieces. When I've read through the transcripts of the meeting twice, there's a lot of questions, and I know we have six months to prepare, but I feel like our size of community and the resources we offer cover what we have, and, and to, to look at something this big, I feel like we should have been planning two years ago. You know, and not that we would have known about this. So it's not to say that I don't appreciate the work that's been done or all the partners that are excited, and that I don't see that it could develop our economy in some ways. I have a lot, too many red flags for me to say, I've watched us throw ourselves into projects and, you know, put all our money on this, where this is going to be the next thing for Raton, and that, and this, and that, and so many things just come back on us. And we have so many other projects right now that are going on, to me, that are priorities, that we need our staff to focus on. So I, I also have huge concerns that it would be defunded, that we would, there could be other problems that the city could be, you know, it would be really unpopular if the city couldn't somehow find a way to support it, if it were unfunded, you know, there's, there's just a lot of future unknowns. There's, to me, there's just so many unknowns. And just the fact of the way this came to fruition, I, you know, heard about it at the last minute, and there was kind of an informal, oh, do you support this? And I'll, you know, no, I don't, because I don't know enough about it, and I haven't known about this for a long time. I haven't had the time, I'm a very analytical thinker. I have huge concerns about housing, staffing. I know that, I read that, that, you know, that they have some connections with 3,000 people in the United States that could potentially come and work, but there's no guarantee. It's really hard to get someone to move here, it's especially hard to get a female to move here. You can, it's a very different dynamic to live in our community, and so that, you know, bothers me. There's a lot of, it needs to be convenient for courts. And there was something, okay, maybe we can do that all virtual, legal counsel, okay, that could be virtual, getting people to the airport, transportation systems, with, and the only people I heard listed in there, I don't know if they're going to be the best options. The healthcare, we have some healthcare. There's, there's just so many different support, even with our incredible partners, that I'm not able to support this at this time. And, and I, you know, apologies to those of you who are really excited, I can see the positives. I'm just not ready with all the negatives that are in my mind, so, thank you.
Thank you. Nothing ventured, nothing gained. What is, what's the essential timeline from the day, the day you submit until the, the ball would get rolling out of DC as well as the timeframe once a grant is approved that the city would have to start moving it into the building, et cetera?
The, well, we've been told that the award will be announced in April. Again, I don't know if that's going to change due to the shutdown, if that's how that's going to delay things, but that's right now what it's slated to be. And then the official start date of the grant is November 1st of 2026, and then, and then it says that we have six months to prepare the facility, or, you know, get ready to basically have them come in.
So I, I think that may alleviate some of Mr. Chadley's concerns about the timeline in having more time to study the issue.
Yeah, I think we have plenty of time to just, to, to get ready for it once we, you know, this is just, just a decision to proceed with the application of the grant. And having taken a program to serve children, from serving eight children with two employees, three employees, to serving 180 children in three different counties, in, in having 12 employees that grew up to 15 employees within a matter of a year and a half, I believe that, in this town, I believe that this project is possible, doable, and a good thing to pursue. I think pursuing the grant, that obviously doesn't guarantee that we get the, get awarded the grant, but I, I believe it's possible that if we were awarded, that we could make it work.
Mr. Campbell, have a question?
I just had two questions. I guess this, like you said, this is a three-year grant. If it's not continued, does that mean at the end of the three years essentially another youth has to be found for that building, or, or it ends and comes apart? Whether these, I guess to somebody that's not from Raton, I mean, people tell me that after 30-some years, but still. but still, it's like, it's the question I have is, these people come here, and if they did want to live here, three years is not a lot of a guarantee if you want to actually buy the house and invest in town. Is there anything from the federal government that it sounds like it will continue? Or is this a Band-Aid in the middle? And then I guess the other question I have, you said, you know, you need an interpreter and some other things, and they possibly wouldn't go to the school system. Is this something that they're going to need security and everything else, or you could have some problem individuals?
Yeah, there will be security, more for protection of them, I think, and just to, you know, make sure that they're safe. But yes, there's in the budget 24/7 security forums, you know, surveillance cameras, perimeter fences, all these things to plague, but there's also playground equipment. And the idea is to get them integrated into the community and not to keep them, like, locked in there. They're not prisoners, but they're just kept there for safety because, you know, they're traumatized. I mean, they've been separated from their families.
And I was just going by the age group, is, you know, is making sure that you are right there. You're talking about the building right by the hospital and everything out there.
The goal is...
What is this security fence going to look like? This, I mean, just trying to say, what is all this going to look like next to your hospital? Is it a...
I mean, it's not going to be like a barbed, no, I don't think it's going to be. It's just to keep, it's like any playground fence, like, yeah, just to keep things safe or whatever.
I guess that would be my question. What, what type of individuals do they incorporate in this? You know, when you say unaccompanied minors, minors are a broad spectrum. How old they could be and unaccompanied means, you know, what type of problem...
Eight to 17.
What type of problem issues they have with your comparison to the boys' school? What type of people ends up, you know, could we be talking about?
I can say, like, the boys' school, and it was kind of amazing, when you went down, that there was very few fences and whatnot. Our geography plays a big part in this. Incidental occasions, they had runners. They didn't get far. I mean, it's a long ways to anywhere from here. And so that in itself kind of helped with the whole low-security type thing where the fences, there were some there, but it didn't have the prison feel.
Yeah, it's not going to have a prison feel. It's just for security.
And so like the boys' school, and those kids were incorporated into public schools.
Yeah, and the other thing is that, I mean, because these children, well, not eligible for, you know, insurance or Medicaid and Medicare, there's coverage in here. There's almost a million dollars for medical care that would, you know, largely, a lot of it go to MCMC, which will really be helpful for our community to have that kind of money pumped in, because they are largely taking Medicaid and Medicare.
Is there at least the feel that this, there could be ongoing another three years or possibly funding in the future?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. There is a slated on, like, the, it's like slated on the books right now that there's a, this goes from 2026 to 2029, and then there's a 2029 to 2032. It just, you know, you have to, like, reapply, you know? And obviously, they don't want to put kids where people are being, you know, they're being mistreated. So there's a lot of rigorous checks to make sure that they're, you know, like, if we, if the facility isn't run well, they'll pull the funding, and you know what I mean? It's not like you can just do whatever you want for three years. There's a lot of checks and balances in the process. Absolutely. The other thing I didn't mention too is the transportation. So we had a meeting, Rick and Cynthia and I had a meeting the other month with the Golden Spread from Clayton, and wanted to figure out a way to get them here, and they're like, well, we just need a vehicle and a staff person. This could really help that, because there is money for a vehicle in here, like a 16-passenger van that could be utilized for this grant and then possibly for other purposes if it's not being utilized by them. So that could help get Golden Spread into the community as well, which they, that's what they specialize in, is bringing people to their appointments.
And just to toot my own horn, non-metro has also got a volunteer driver program now. It's spreading throughout the state, very good success rate so far.
Okay.
So that's another option.
Good.
There were three, if I remember the transcript right now, there were three options. Sounds like we're looking for the 24/7.
Shelter.
Shelter. Because that was the best I thought. I don't want to see people going into foster homes.
Yeah, and it would be hard here, because there's just such a limited community.
And there's just too many works. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will move to approve Resolution 2025-65, supporting the submission of application to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Families Office of Refugee Resettlement for funding to establish a community-based shelter and supportive services program for unaccompanied children in Raton, New Mexico.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by a sign of a aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Please note, we have one nay. Item O, City Manager Report.
Mayor and Commissioner, bottom line up front. Following the passing of Bob Funk in July, the city has been anticipating a potential change at our fixed base operator by American, by Express Aviation at the airport. We're informed that Express intends to pull out, but will work with us while we go through the succession plan. The request for information is being issued this week to gather input and identify interested entities that can ensure continuity of airport operations during the forthcoming transition in the FBO ownership and management. Mentions of dispatches, shout out to Aunt Tice, Cy Trujillo, Brenda Ferry, and Brandy Deeds for their work in the candidate forum. The treasurer is headway into our annual audit. Public Works crews have finalized prep and completed their task for Fox Seal, and they received 300 tons of cold mixed asphalt yesterday and have already began large-scale patching operations. The police will be participating in a career fair in Trinidad next week. The fire department have completed hose testing this week. Engineering is attending the regional planning and zoning conference in Red River this week. And the clerk wants to remind candidates that there is no campaigning on city property to include signs and rallies. Economic Development is planning for the upcoming 2025 Raton Regional Economic Development Summit, which will take place October 28th and 29th at the Raton Convention Center. And finally, a few closing thoughts. On October 1st, 2025, the New Mexico Legislature convened a special session to address anticipated federal funding reductions impacting key state programs. The session was called to focus on maintaining support for essential services such as rural health care, Medicaid, and food assistance. Lawmakers were working to ensure that valuable populations and critical infrastructure are protected from effects of these federal budget challenges. While the session has targeted agenda, some had expressed interest into expanding the scope to consider additional fiscal policy matters. Legislators passed five bills designed to mitigate the impact of federal cuts on health care, food assistance, and related services. The governor signed all five bills after the session. Bill one was to provide 162 million in emergency funds, including support for health care, food assistance, insurance subsidies, and transfers to emergency rural health funds. Bill two addressed the expiring Affordable Care Act and expands health care insurance aid to those 400% of the poverty level, backed by 17.3 million. Senate Bill one transfers 50 million to support rural and underserved health care. Senate Bill two lets Metro Court judges resume handling criminal competency cases, reversing a 2025 change. And Senate Bill three lets the Health Department buy children's COVID-19 vaccine and broaden its sources for vaccine policy. That is all I have. Sorry.
All righty, thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Honeyfield? Commissioner Schuster?
No, I just want to remind everybody this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, as well as Halloween.
Mayor broke in. I have nothing. Oh, Jason has something there.
Before you turn, due to the nature of Raton being a small town and me having my phone silenced, I have some clarity on the J.C. Penney property fencing. I thought it might be worthwhile to bring to your attention before the meeting comes to a close. So the J.C. Penney fencing isn't about the side that abuts Sanderson on our southern side of the property. It is a requested change order from Jayden to fence the west side of the property. And the logic behind that is, most of these buildings abutted the alley. As the buildings went away, the natural retaining wall that stopped a five-foot drop-off between our alley and these three city-owned properties now creates a bit of a hazard there. So the first one has been loosely graded in, but if you remember, we had the property right next to Inbank, the building that had fallen down. We knocked down a previous building in the middle section, and now J.C. Penney is falling. So we have a stretch of unfenced area that would go from Sanderson's property to essentially Inbank, that we have a significant grade drop. And the thought behind that is if we have an attractive nuisance or a fall hazard that we need to mitigate that somehow. Jayden's attempted that, was to get this pricing on the fence that runs across all three of the city-owned properties on the west side. Not sure if that would sway your decision or not in the matter, clearly your purview there, but I, in fairness to what was being proposed, the contractor evidently was attempting to make it to the meeting, but didn't, was listening on the radio, texted me during the agenda item, but I had my phone on silent, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah, the south I couldn't figure out.
But I would like to say, though, is there a possibility you use your charismatic personality influence the state highway department? If we could get our hands on some guardrail and just put a guardrail down that...
It may be possible, or in addition, we may look at something like Jersey Barrier. I think Jayden thought this was probably the cleanest, best-looking option. I do agree that it does create a bit of a problem for us. Mitigate it short-term probably by the temporary fencing and the active construction zone, but based on that linear footage and what I've seen from state price agreement fencing, probably not out of bounds, based on the value of a torque claim. A dollar spent may be 10 saved on this thing, so.
And then my suggestion is we put the fence back on the agenda for next meeting and address it then, and maybe we'll have some other...
Like I said, I'm looking at it as a little public, not so much. Who climbs over the barrier?
I mean, and they both would be a hazard, you know? An intoxicated person falling over, but the fence won't stop a waylaid vehicle from dropping five foot off, so maybe...
Jersey bounce or a guardrail makes sense. Because what I'm worried about is if I'm trying to text on Flippy, which one I don't text, but... And I wanted to, I turned east by accident, at least. I might have heard some embarrassment.
And we may want to address drainage issues as well. I'm not sure if this alley flows into those logs and would ultimately carry dirt on the second street. Probably a solid short-stop plan by Jayden to fence it in the short term, but we can, we can make do with what we've got until the next meeting if nothing else. That was the logic, so.
Okay, well, we can put on the agenda, not specifically a fence, but an option. Some kind of barrier.
Honestly, at this price point, it's below the $25,000 threshold, where if we came up with a solution, we might not have to bring it back to you unless you were just enamored to hear about what our solution is. We could probably work it at staff and...
Why don't you come up with some ideas and prices?
Thank you.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, thanks. Appreciate you. That'd look like Ann's going to sneak in on here, too.
Sorry. Well, first, I just want to thank you for the thoughtful discussion and listening to the grant. And I just want to emphasize about the Economic Development Summit coming up in two weeks. It's going to be great. We have a lot of great speakers. We have a lot of amazing sponsors this year, and we also have the Kearney groundbreaking that's going to be happening at 5 o'clock after the summit. It's going to be a party, music, and everything, so I hope everybody can come, 5 o'clock on Tuesday.
And in an hour and 56 minutes, you need signatures?
You should just cancel the commission painting.
In an hour and 56 minutes, you need signatures? For the grant? Okay, so we need to sign, stick around and sign some forms.
Well, I think you can sign those. They're just MOUs and then the resolution.
Sorry. I stand corrected. Yeah, I'm not sticking around.
No, I don't think the commission needs to.
I will sign the resolution. I will sign the resolution. All right, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.